She gets a little drunk.
She's a little rough, too.
All right, well, we'll get started here before we have to have, we will have our organizational meeting before our regular meeting. Counselor Ash Hill today and Counselor Miller sends his regards. So I'd like to call to order the organizational meeting for October 22nd. First order of business, obviously peculiar interest, there shouldn't be any agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
Yeah, your worship.
All right, give a motion.
Yeah, move to adopt the agenda.
Thanks, Cory. All in favor? All right. First order of business will be the 2025, 2024-25 deputy mayor appointment, and I believe it be Mr. Miller?
That would be Counselor Miller, your worship, yeah.
So a motion, I guess, you to appoint him as the deputy?
Yeah, I do have, yeah.
Cory, all in favor? Done. All right. Meeting dates. Proposed meeting date schedule for 2025. Donna, you want to comment on that? I think there was a made a comment there.
Yeah, we missed, uh, we corrected it. When I, when I went to put this on one page, I had everything cut paste, and then we had other ideas. So that's where we caught it. So Jesse did miss it. Basically, we're providing the meeting schedule for all of next year. So basically, we're staying, like, of course, second and fourth, except for the summer, which is July and August, or June, July and August are regular, oh, sorry, July, August are regular. And then, of course, October is committee, the whole regular and organizational meeting of the new council. So our December meetings are back-to-back, as they usually are, and that's budget passage, and of course, give council enough time to review the budget. It will be finished in November. So basically, those are the, those are the dates. Do you need comment on that, anybody?
Uh, yeah, just again, September and October there. And with elections and stuff, I mean, typically, there's a lot less meetings. We really shouldn't be doing a whole lot.
No.
Even if there's something that needs to be done, it should really be getting pushed aside and wait if it can't. So I don't, maybe we compare those back, or not, or I don't, doesn't really matter to me, other than we're going to show up and call a meeting order and say nothing's on the agenda, and that's going to be the next.
We've done that before, I think.
When just campaigning, uh, it depends on the local authorities election. I don't know. We have to wait for that to come out, so.
But realistically, September, October, people are going to be, it's against elections, and people are, I mean, we shouldn't be making a whole lot of grandiose decisions and changing things in any way at that point. We're just, we're just, you know.
Maybe, maybe as a suggestion.
Playing God council at that point.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe as a suggestion, Counselor Cory, ask for counsel and worship, your worship's consideration. Let's maybe have a regular, in case we need a regular in September.
Yeah, and there's going to be thought thing that needs to happen, but yeah.
And then take out COW in October.
Well, yeah, and like, get COW to plan for the future. Well, the council isn't supposed to be planning for the future, it's supposed to be holding the place of everything for a month.
And if we had to call a special, we could call a special, something big happened or whatever.
If there's something big happening, we really should be talking to whoever the council elect is at that point as well, so.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. So with your, with your consideration, your worship of council, we can have a regular in September, cancel the COW in October, no committee of the whole, and then we just move regular, organizational and regular. So Madam Clerk, if you can on the screen put organizational meeting first in October and then regular, just change, change it up a little bit.
I can teach you right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so, so just to clarify, no September ninth COW?
Correct.
And then no October 14th.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to that effect, counsel, that one, and approve the rest?
Back in with me.
Good, all in favor? We're good. Okay. Six point one, signing authorities, administration remains counsel to uphold the signing authority that is standard. There's nothing new about that, I don't believe.
No, your worship, nothing new.
Yeah, anybody have any comments, questions? No? Motion to?
Well, we're not really changing anything. What are we, like, reaffirming, or like?
We're confirming, Counselor Cory. Yeah, we have to confirm it every year, even if we're not changing it.
I don't know that we normally have ever done that. Okay?
Yeah. Actually, it's a protective thing.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, I guess I move to reaffirm the existing signing authorities policy?
Good, all in favor? Okay, that is carried as well. And then we will go to number seven, bank assessor, town authority assessment, authority review. You want to make a comment on that to Cindy? You want to talk about that, or?
I agree, okay.
You want to approve it?
No, the assessor, six point one.
Oh, the assessors, yeah, KCL has been our assessors for.
Yep.
Okay.
A hundred years.
Okay. We're satisfied with their, with their work. Good. Motion to continue with Casey?
Yeah, no reason to reinvent the wheel now. Yeah, no, I definitely move to reappoint Grand Clerk KCL Consulting as our assessment authority for the coming year.
Okay, all in favor? Carried. All right, then we move right to, all my paperwork's got in there, it just don't need any of that, I guess. We'll go right to the FCS advisory board appointments. Say, Donna, you want to comment on that?
You missed that one.
Oh, the town authority, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were making a, what's that?
I know I did, for the, the two very separate items, and for like, for actual administrative, they do need to be actual motions that are like separate, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're not changing anything with the banks. It's just, everything's still ATB, and all limits are the same as far as I can see, yeah?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I'd move to, yeah, move to reappoint ATB for the town bank, banking institution.
Good, all in favor? Sorry about that. All right, now we'll go to the FCS. Donna, you want to make comment on that?
I, I would, your worship of council. So bylaw 2007, oh, four sets up the provisions of the FCS advisory board. It was written in 2007 and does need updating. It's, it's very old. What our concern was, we had two folks come in on the deadline, and we do that with this libel, any question she's here tonight. We didn't have any of the old board members re-upped. And so I phoned the county, and I talked to Dean Honesty, because of course, they're our court under, and I said to him, we've advertised, we have a youth and a county member, and they're good, sorry, council clerk.
Well, they're not our funder. We have, they, they, the province funds, they just do the filing for the region.
Yeah.
They have to be funded from the province, yeah. It's direct from the province, not from the county, just for clarity's sake.
I mischose the words. Thanks for correcting.
Yeah, I'm sure everyone else is, I think, I'm sure you know that, but I'm sure everyone else is aware of that, yeah.
No, great catch. I appreciate it. So I talked to Dean Honesty with the county, and I said, we got, I won't call it a problem here, but I said, we're moving towards, Michaela's got some really cool things out there where she's forming advisor groups for a, for a special event. So for example, ATB, their whole branch is going to work with us on Christmas Eve, their whole branch, which is very cool. So short hits, short volunteers, yes. I said to Dean, I said, I'd like to keep the two candidates, but keep them as support for Michaela or community advisors or whatever. I asked him what he thought about the whole issue of the board, and he said, he's changing all his boards to the county to be more engagement groups. And he said, if, if we didn't have an advisory board, it wouldn't bother him in the least, and the act of specify. So because our bylaw's so old, it's got FCSs reporting to council, working the budget with council, and it's, it's just very updated. So he liked the idea of gathering volunteers for special events. They could come, they could volunteer, and they could go. And, and we could, we could recruit for community expertise on a particular subject, a particular project. County indicated they had no issue with us rescinding the bylaws out of date, very prescriptive with respect to budgets reporting to council and other matters that made more sense 10 years ago. Michaela and FCSs is having a great deal of success with recruiting the community for short-term projects. So what we're recommending, and certainly I will provide this libel license to discuss this with you as well, we're recommending that council consider rescinding the bylaw, provide us as administration with the ability to work effectively with more responsive community engagement of situations, projects, initiatives, and other matters. So we can stand down for discussion. Cory?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, I mean, it's right in the name, it's an advisory board. It's effectively should, always was intended to be a community-like engagement group, and, and a, not a, it's not a governance board, it's not an administer, it's not, it's gotten kind of off of track of what it's supposed to be, and a lot of the activities are, FCSs are prescribed by the province. Like, it's, the board gets off track of what their legislated mandate even is a lot of times. I feel like switching the model is probably in everyone's interest.
I agree. I appreciate it. And actually, when it comes down to it, being an advisory board, they don't vote on anything, as far as, you know.
Well, they're not supposed to, they're not supposed to be providing advice, they're supposed to be, they're not supposed to be out, like, reinventing the wheel and getting us in trouble with the province, saying that's not in your mandate, too.
Yeah. And, and I think, um, sorry, may I, your worship?
Yep.
Do you like to talk about some of your successes? Some of your thoughts? Come on, come on.
I love being here.
Here we go.
Um, no, I agree. I don't think we need an advisory board, but I'm very welcome to anybody who wants to come into my office and sit down and talk with me and bring ideas forward or work on ideas with me.
And then the two that we have, the young student and the county representative are really gung-ho about.
Yeah, they're amazing. Like, my high school student brings so many ideas. She's very energetic about a lot of things, which makes me really excited. So, but she would love to work with, like, work with me to bring ideas forward, and still be, I think, but not have that meetings every month. Like, everybody has busy lives, so it's hard to commit, even though it's only a few meetings a year, but it's difficult.
Awesome, thanks. Good job, Michaela.
Thank you.
It's easier for short-term projects. It really is. People get excited.
People are interested about that specific thing.
Hundred percent. So we've been talking about this for a while. It wasn't the right time to bring it to council, because I wanted to talk to the county first. And when Dean told me that he's restructuring all his boards, because he's having trouble with the county boards as well, with keeping people busy for a year, all that sort of thing, it's a big commitment, but people will volunteer for a project they're excited about. And, and he said, a couple that he's restructured already have better enthusiasm, better outcomes, and so forth. So we had a chat about it administratively, and our, our ask of council is to rescind the bylaw, provide us to work effectively, and pivot and be able to work more collaboratively, collaboratively with the community in a, in a more efficient manner. Is it, Cory?
Yeah, we, we would need a bylaw to rescind the bylaw. That's the simplest bylaw. Jesse has like 10 seconds while we're sitting here talking, or other things. I move that we just refer this to the regular meeting in 10 minutes from now, and we could probably pass the first couple readings, at least, of the bylaw in the next meeting, right after this one.
Sure. Okay, so that's what we'll.
I just don't have connectivity to any of the rooms.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Cindy could take the rest of the.
Yeah, I mean, it's the quickest one-sentence bylaw you will, and I'm sure you have templates for that.
Sure, I can go over there, because then I can operate that thing.
Great.
Sorry, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I made a motion that we defer to that.
Okay, all in favor of that?
There we go.
That is carried.
Perfect.
It, it makes a lot of sense. Really does, and, you know, it's gonna.
Okay. Thank you, council. Thank you, worship.
Okay. All right, moving on to policies. The policy GOV 0223, elected officials' remuneration review. Say, Donna, you want to comment on that or anything?
Yeah, we, we passed this policy within 2023. We made no changes. Council can certainly make changes on remuneration schedules, for sure. Council, mayor's at 1,001,07 a month. Counselors are 843, 63 per month, plus their expenses.
Yep.
And we're just, resident council either pass the policy or make amendments to it, depending on how you, how you feel for remuneration.
Does anyone have any comments on that?
I don't see any need for any amendments. I would move it as presented, as usual.
Do you like to make a motion to that effectively?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. All in favor? We're good. All right, nine point two, the travel and subsistence allowance review, and I think that's pretty much the same thing.
It is. It's, it's based on revenue Canada. Policy, that, that hasn't changed any.
Same thing there? Somebody wants to make?
Yeah, sign, sign, I can move to reaffirm the council, council allowance policy?
All in favor? And that is carried. All right, and we'll get into the bylaws, the meeting procedures bylaw 2023-10. Say, Donna, you want to talk about that one?
We can. It's just basically your meeting procedures, conduct, public conduct, notice of meetings, how we do it, how we do it in our group council meeting, how we conduct organizational meeting, our regular meetings, committee of the whole, any special meetings, any in-camera items or closed meeting items, how we structure committees, general of the council, what constitutes a quorum, how we do electronic meetings. So we're currently within Bill 20's requirements, how we do public hearings, and we schedule delegations, and even part 21, how we call a delegate to order when they're passionate about why they're here, rules governing debate, rules for motions, amendments to motions, motions to refer, splitting a motion, tabling, positioning motions. So in other words, how do we record votes, voting results, rules for bylaws.
Darryl knows all this very well, but he's very good at all this parliamentary stuff.
I only mess up every third one, so.
We all have this last week, or last, somebody had a chance to look at it, so. Yeah, that's why we put it in.
Somebody has any changes they would like on the camera?
Yeah, I would just reaffirm bylaw 2023-10 and 2022-14.
Thank you. All in favor?
That's carried. Yeah, I mean, we did need to literally have a bylaw to even amend what we wanted. It's not the time or place, even if we were going to.
No, and administrations had no recommendations.
And the council of conduct, same thing.
Same, your worship and council.
I shall reaffirm that.
All right, I'm correct about that?
Yeah, I, I made a motion for both, but yeah, yeah, whatever, yeah.
Yep. Okay, we're good. So then we'll get into the 11, the committees, the boards, and appointments, and the standing committees. Eleven point one, committee of the whole of all councils, emergency management committee, all council, planning and sustainability committee, all council, regional assessment review board, currently just myself on that, and Donna, you're?
I'm a CEB, your worship, I'm your backup for CEB for subdivision.
Right. And then the subdivision and development appeal board, mayor and our council, and it, currently, it's yourself, and I'm the alternate for that one.
Yeah, I think we have to retrain in the new year, so I'm going to study a little harder, so I can beat you by one percent.
Yeah, so that was pretty straightforward, so there, I don't think, unless somebody has any comment, then I don't see any changes in that one. Motion to accept the standing committees as is?
I'll make that motion.
Good, all in favor? All right, we will get into the boards. Eleven point six, the 3920, that's, I have this there, we aren't doing anything about that one. So that one's pretty much, unless something comes along, we're not doing anything there. Chamber Commerce Council, non-voting member, Counselor Musson, you're okay with that? Okay. Lenuke County FCS board, Counselor, you're good with that one?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. The Lenuke Foundation Board was yourself as well. Good. Thorbsby FCS board counselor, so we.
I have nothing to say. Do we want to?
Yeah.
Just table that for now, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Taking it to the regulars.
All right.
I guess technically, maybe we don't pass this bylaw, 10% bylaw, but probably we do in 10 minutes from now, so it's probably irrelevant.
Yep. Okay. And then the library board, currently Rash and Musson. I think we're going to leave that. We may, say, Donna, you want to comment on the library board?
With respect to library board, administration just has to report to the province properly to give us a template on the motions and so forth. You can make a motion to pass both here, but we have to, we have to structure the motion in their templates, because that's what they want. Typically, and I don't think we change anything for this, but talking to the Alberta library board, the, the council's auditor trustees, and we only need one for the future. We don't need alternates, so that the trustee represents the whole of Alberta, that's what they were telling me, so we don't need alternates. Very few library boards have alternates. So we can discuss that with the council. I'm not recommending we change anything for next year.
Okay. All right. And then 1112, the Yellowhead Regional Library Board, Counselor Nibbott, Cory, you're?
Oh, they're fine. It's got me in Springfield at 10 o'clock, so I gotta be out of the house at normal time, which is not something I'm used to anymore, but other than I, it's fine.
I know, that's, that's accurate. All right, okay, well, that's it for the boards. So if somebody wants to make motion to keep them all is, with exception 1110, which we'll table?
Yeah, I'd move to confirm, reaffirm Mayor Austin's appointments to the various boards.
Good, all in favor? That is carried, and that's, basically, that's organizational meeting and nothing else. Okay, so I will adjourn the organizational meeting. We're good to go. We'll go right into the regular meeting then. Okay, so 723, I'd like to call the regular council meeting for Sep, Tuesday, September 24th. Order? That's not right, that would be October 22nd.
Yeah.
What's the hour?
Do you have the last one? Do you have last?
Or on October 22nd?
Do you have the last, do you have last month's meeting?
It's, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
September 24th.
Do you have, do you need this one?
Oh, yeah, it's September here.
No, this one's of October. You may just have the wrong one.
No, it's just wrong. No, we've got the right meeting, Mr. Wrong Dean on the.
I mean.
So weird.
Right?
No. Okay, that's fine.
My coffee says.
I don't know, maybe I printed it wrong.
I don't know, I just wanted to make sure that you know. You might have September's whole package.
Yeah, you have September's whole package.
Okay. There we go. Thank you very much. I thought I missed the whole one there for some reason. All right, let's start again. 724, call the organized meeting for October 22nd order. First order of business, call for peculiar interest. I don't believe there's anything in there. Third, second item, agenda, any additions or deletions? None? Motion?
I'd move to accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Cory. All in favor? That is carried.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We, we did already add, I just, because it was two meetings in one meeting, we already have added something. I apologize. So I need to, yeah, withdraw my previous motion, and we do have an addition of the FCSs advisory bylaw, advisory board bylaw, which is nine, yeah, nine.
Okay, we're going to put her on this one?
Nine point two, you worship.
Okay. What are you going to call up?
On nine two's, oh, is it on there?
It's already on the digital.
Yeah, nine point two, your worship.
She just got it on there.
Okay, fair enough. That's, yeah. I was going to say, I didn't think it was on there. I'm very confused.
It is now.
Yeah, okay.
Other than she just prepared a little.
Okay.
It's not a Darryl's paper.
No, I don't have it here.
You'll have to follow up with screen, Darryl.
Okay.
She changed it in, as we were, as we were doing it here. Your paper doesn't update quite a bit.
Exactly. I'm on now, which I anyways. Okay, so next order of business and the adoption of the previous minutes for the.
I checked those over. They seem to be in order. I will move.
Okay, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, no public hearings, the presentation, no delegations, the whole business. Say, Donna, you want to go through that one there?
Yeah, that's the, that's the recreation capital budget adjustment with respect to the air conditioning. Thank you. I'll ask Ms. Probst to.
Yes, I'm back. Hopefully, there turns the turn. Good evening, council. So just further to follow up with the discussions that we've had at the previous meeting, what I'm asking is if we can real, reallocate our capital budget funding to support the air conditioning, we would be removing the funds from building audit and rubber flooring installed that we're looking at the year now, and just applying them towards this project instead. After the last meeting, I did reach out to the Jufman Heating again and talked with him, and he was able to come back with a more competitive quote, because he had originally priced the three projects, the library, the weight room, and the water treatment plant separately. So by doing the recreation complex and the life that calls one, he was able to get a better price on the materials from his supplier, or, sorry, from his supplier. And then Daniel Heating and Refrigeration out of Waduke also came out and quoted, they came in just a little bit higher. Sorry, I should have noted, LTH was just shy of 31,000. Daniel came in at 35,000. It does not include the electrical, though, so we would need to add that with our electrical contractor. And then yesterday, I actually met with Central Refrigeration out of Wataquon. They've done work at our facility before. I do not have their quote on hand yet. So, but really, what I'm, it was a really good meeting, and I'm actually really excited to see what his quote was, because he was just a lot more informative in walking me through the process and what it, what it's going to look like in this basis. But I guess what I'm asking for is just permission to move the capital dollars to change the projects, and then with support of CA O'Donah, once all the final closer in, we'll go through, make a final decision on the best value for that.
Right.
Yeah.
Any comments on that, anybody?
Yeah, it's remarkable how the price just, um, it's $12,000, when you think to ask, but that sounds a lot better.
They didn't, I don't think it went down to $12,000. I think it went down to $3,000.
I just added it up, but I just pulled up the quote.
Okay, so. 123. No, because this is not for the water, the new quote does not include the water treatment plant. Right? My math's wrong here? 10203.
So these are just for the two projects, not the two.
The, the. It was about 34,000 before, and now it's 30,090. That's.
I still think it's higher, it's getting a lot more reasonable, at least, but yeah, it's, I feel like we should be making a habit of shopping these things out, instead of just going with a single bidder every time, but.
Oh, for sure. Hundred percent on projects like this. I agree with you. I did question, I talked to actually all of the contractors about the pricing of the equipment, and as we know, like, day-to-day life, everything with COVID has skyrocketed. The last one, at Central Refrigeration, he actually recommended installing Carrier Brown, and he said Carrier is, for that was split, is kind of a good middle-of-the-road, a very solid one. Top one would be Mitsubishi. Samsung falls in just right under, I asked him in my file. The other two have quoted Samsung, I believe. And he's like, Samsung is right there with Carrier, but he feels Carrier's just a little bit better, but, yeah.
So I guess, your worship of council, we're asking for the allocation. We're not, we're not saying we're going to run any quotes yet, so we hear back from Wataquon.
Yeah, I'm waiting for Wataquon, and then I'll, you and I can need to go through.
So you're just looking, you just want to allocate, or you're not.
You just want to allocate contracts just then. I would suggest, if we have any questions or concerns, so I wouldn't have a problem sending the Wataquon quote out to you all via email, so you can have a look at it as well.
Yeah, true. I would move that the funds be reallocated.
Good, all in favor? That is carried. All right. Okay, new business, staff office quotas, eight point one. Say, Donna, you want to go through that for us, please?
I certainly, with your worship, I just need to catch up here. There we go. Okay, so typically, if we're going to shut down an office for a function, it's the proper protocol to ask council for permission, and then the reasons why. Two dates, administration's request enclosure permission for is the all-staff meeting taking place on October 29th, from 3:30 to 4:30, which will be advertised. The reason for that all-staff meeting is we're going hard on a lot of different projects here right now, and I want to bring all the staff up to, up to speed, not only on them, but to, to look at some work, look at what everybody's work plans are, how we're going to buzz, that sort of stuff, and a little bit of a roll-around meeting, because we are, because we want to. it off until Christmas, and it's all very exciting with the lift station pumps, we have to look at putting those in after one or two in the morning, and everybody's sound asleep, so we'll be issuing sleeping pills. Okay. So we need to do that because of the...
Dose the water before you turn the pot off.
So we're thinking, and the river pump is on its way, the big intake river pump is on its way, I don't know exactly when we're gonna get that in. We did, we're able to stop the water at the intake, reduce the water, I'll save that if I do soon. Andrew, pick, pick in here.
Yeah, we're not a hundred percent sure, the blinds are in place.
Right, the blinds are in place, so that we can maybe chip out that goo in the wet water, and also we can figure out what's wrong with that valve, so we've got that coming. We've got the bump station coming, it's, they've given us the nineteenth of November as a drop-down date, so we've got to get outside prepared, the engineers are, have worked on their plan already, and they're just finishing that up, so we're gonna be going hard till Christmas, we really will, all very exciting stuff. Daniel's duck, Christmas party, I'd like to have it on December nineteenth. Office to advertise closure from noon to four-thirty P.M. We want to have it on a Friday, this is a Thursday, we will come to work Friday, it's just Cindy has to fly home, and it's all about her.
Cindy booked her flights before we thought about this.
So we kind of want everybody there. It's, all staff will be there unless they're working at the rec center, so we just would appreciate those two closure dates, and they'll be well advertised.
Thank you. I'm sure they're both fine, how did I just have the question, like, what do, do you guys make accommodations for the public works, like emergency call still, or, I don't know, does it ever come up?
We just forward the call to you.
Well, we used to, but... No, it's, you know, like, the nineteenth or something, I don't know, do you guys like to get it available?
Yeah, we still, we still have our on-call, yeah, on-call person. Rural states, they have to be within an hour of town, so, well...
And we are.
Yes.
We are, we're in Vegas, we'll just take the town leader to fly them back if we need to.
No, I just like you say, I've never, I've never thought to ask of what happens when there is a water main break or whatever, and you guys are happy afternoon off.
We ride.
We don't use the word.
Like I said, we normally forward it to you, we just never had any issues the past couple of years, so...
I swear to God, it's like it used to, it's, remember times where, yeah, as soon as everyone at the tower is busy, yeah, my phone would ring off the hook, yeah.
Thanks for jinking this, jinxing this issue.
Yeah, we didn't have to worry.
I don't, we didn't have enough last year, I was expecting it. I was just waiting for it.
Uh, so, remember state, we don't have to put that one in here?
No, that.
That's a stat, so, yeah.
All right.
And typically, I attend that on behalf of the staff team, I lay a reason behalf of that.
All right, a motion to approve those dates, that's...
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, on favor? Very good. Uh, eight point two, North Saskatchewan watershed allowance support request, and I believe they're asking for money, nothing new?
That is correct.
What's going on with their meetings, that's my favorite question, we haven't...
I haven't seen anything.
I don't have meetings for, play some time.
Actually, I've seen a few things, they've got some, their junior kids have been meeting and stuff like that, but I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything, so I just, yeah, it's one of these things that, and...
I guess once you're out of there, I guess they, I don't know, I'll, I'll look into it. I'll talk to them.
Yeah, I'm just curious about anything, but...
I'll give them a call, but I, I, all of a sudden, now that we're not getting any newsletters or nothing, so I don't know what happened.
And given some of the other stuff, I mean, particularly relevant, so I mean, I put, move that we accept for information and refer to budget discussions in November, as recommended.
Good, on favor? Carried. Yeah, let's, I agree with the audience, I'll have to send them an email. All right, number nine point one, proposed fees and service bylaws, twenty twenty-four oh nine.
Yeah, so, thank you, your worship, basically, we're all adding to this, and we try not to when things come up, and bin permit fees, we've had folks asking for bin permits because they're getting the big bins in to clean out their houses, or clean out their garages, or whatever, and so that's come to our attention, these, these bin fees are pretty much in line with, with typical municipal bin fees, there's no, there's no, uh... They have to pay for the bin, but this is just our permit for it to sit on the street, basically, and properly done, so those, those fees are seven days, a hundred, fourteen days, two, twenty-one days, three hundred, thirty days, four hundred. One, everyday extension over their permit is fifteen dollars a day. Over thirty days, if they need it for a big job, sale authorized, and, you know, probably give them another thirty-day permit, right, if it's over thirty days, we give them another thirty-day permit. Add schedule, either cemetery fees with the following, so we have cremation grave service, and the, this is two hundred and sixty-two G.S.T., included a hundred dollars perpetual care, we've never really gathered perpetual care before, we are, but we want to make it formal. Earth burial services, that's what they call them now, they're no, they're no longer grave digging, they're earth burials, eight hundred and eighty-two G.S.T., included plus two hundred perpetual care. The, uh, and this is for the United Church Cemetery portion, the Catholic charges their own, the New Life Church charges their own, but they will be, also, they'll have to provide perpetual care to us because we mow the cemetery, right, that's, that's all for upkeep. So, these two cremation and earth burial services are mainly for the, for the United Church portion. Bowman, Bobcat, and Ho charge eight hundred for an earth burial to the other churches, so we're, we're in line, we're not charging any more any less, and cremation grave services. So, what we require is to council resolution, evaluate the steps of what we've proposed here, repeal bylaw twenty twenty-four oh four fees and services, and, or twenty twenty-four oh eight, sorry, to repeal bylaw twenty twenty-four oh four, so the new bylaw will be twenty twenty-four oh eight, and we have all the attachments, there's the old bylaw menu. Correct?
Yeah, I just, a couple of things with this bylaw, for sure, the actual bylaw itself doesn't actually say in here, it just, it's definitions of it, and just, this bylaw is coming to effect, you know, yeah, it, it doesn't actually reference that, these, you know, as per the attached schedules, these are the fees that would be charged, so it's implied, not actually clear.
Yep.
But then, the reason why we broke it out as a separate set of schedules, that we didn't have to repeal and pass a bylaw every time, that we can just, you know, amend the, like, amend the schedule without having to, like, repeal the bylaw every time?
Yeah.
But we really should repeal the bylaw and amend it, new one to, as per the attached schedules, this is what the town shall charge for various, you know, fees and...
Yeah, you're a hundred percent right, it'd be nice if we could just change the schedule, so...
Well, yeah, I think we can, if we change the bylaw accordingly, that, that seems relevant either way, but then, once we do that, I don't think we have to repeal the bylaw.
No.
By motion, I think, probably change the schedule.
Change the schedule, let me, let us throw some wording in there, because it's not gonna be passed till the regular in, in November anyway, so let me grab some language there.
This seems like it's easier, because then you guys can just change what you're gonna change, and it's just like a quick motion rather than a...
Yeah.
I, I felt like that was the intent when we changed it like that, and then we lost all the actual text of the bylaw, so it was just, we all knew what was going on, and kind of forgot to write it.
You're right, we did, absolutely, no, I, I hear what you're saying, makes total sense, because once we put it in, we can change the schedule of bylaw status.
Yeah.
Because of the...
Yeah, the schedule of the bylaw, it's an attachment to the bylaw.
That's right, that's right.
And Donna, when you referenced the bins being on the street, could the bins be anywhere on their driveway? If they still have to pay a permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Just bin permit.
Permit, bin permit, and they're just for the big ones, right? Not just an extra little garbage can or something, these are for the big ones. I know the gentleman on the corner, just down here on the way to the Valley Restaurant, he's on the corner, he gets one every year, and he's solely cleaning everything up, so, and he happily applies for his permit, and so, yeah, no matter where they're sitting, they, they have to have a permit, yeah. Yeah, simply because in a lot of cases, when, if they're sitting on your driveway, the bin company has to winch them and skip them, and sometimes it skids across our infrastructure, and granted, this isn't much to charge for a bin permit, but in the bin permit itself, it's, it's gonna talk about infrastructure, they can't skip them across, they have to be picked up on the driveway, and it, it can't be skipped across our curb and gutter system, so that'll be in the permit.
I guess I took you, I mean, yeah, the, the bins themselves are also kind of like a issue with being unsightly and everything, and irritate people, but at the same time, you don't want to charge such a high fee that you discourage someone from getting rid of their clutter and garbage.
A hundred percent.
Uh, you know, start talking a couple hundred bucks, are, are we discouraging people from getting it?
Do it faster. They only want to pay a hundred bucks, they'll do it faster.
Well, but they have, if they have that much stuff that they need a big bin, I really want them to get a bin and get rid of it if they have that much garbage filling up. You know, I mean, you know, if it's gonna take them a month to get rid of the garbage, well, then so be it, it's better than it not going away. I don't know, I just think about, I don't know.
Should we, what you're saying, council, or maybe, through, through your worship, is to propose, maybe we'll come back to you with a secondary fee schedule for the permits, to, to maybe encourage more permits?
Well, I don't know, like I say, I, like, I, if it's, yes, I get you don't want the bin to be wrecking our structure, be plugging apart, and to be sitting there for six months just 'cause, but at the same time, if somebody has garbage, and that's a whole related unsightly issue, well, hey, the bin sits there for a couple of weeks, but it makes the garbage go away, that seems like going to be long and encourage, I guess, I don't know, like it...
I would think if they're doing a renovation, then it was gonna be thirty days, sitting there, four hundred bucks isn't more, much more on their renovation.
The example we were just talking about, though, it's just a residence, it's just a place that has too much stuff built up.
Oh, hurry up.
I would suggest maybe, sorry, council, I would suggest maybe we can do a bit of an intake, and if they're doing a major renovation, we, we could actually change the schedule to go major renovations or whatever.
Well, if it's part of the development permit or something.
That's right, and then maybe leave it at a hundred, a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five, up it that way, but at, at the thirty-day mark, they almost need to pay more if they're doing construction renovations or, or development permit.
Yeah.
We will, we will put a secondary fee schedule in place for you, and for that.
Andrew, you have a comment there?
Yeah, I'm just, just wondering, like, sorry, not to over...
No, we'll get him to...
Why would we bother doing, like, a seven-day, a fourteen-day, a twenty-one-day, a thirty-day? Why not just do it at fifteen bucks a day? They schedule for how many days they're gonna have it there, and then if they go above, above, you know...
I think that you're trying to encourage them to, like, here, like, you have a week, hurry and get it done, and you're kind of like trying to reinforce in their mind, hurry and get it done, because we don't want this bin sitting here forever.
Yeah.
But I guess that was my point, that's good, and I understand that, but I also understand that probably the garbage should go away too, so, I don't know. I understand that you do that, and you don't.
Like, for me, like, when I look at it myself, at fifteen bucks a day, I'm gonna try and do it as fast as possible.
Yeah.
Anybody that has a bin, they're obviously already working on trying to get rid of garbage to start with, right? Instead of giving, like, large sums, like, you know, I'd say, I, I need it for seven days to come in and pay a hundred dollars, I can have done it six, or five.
Yeah, there's not an incentive for you to hurry up, it's incentive for you, oh, you got a week, but...
Exactly.
But then if you have more garbage, and there's an eighth day, it's not disincentivizing you, and you're still gonna keep updating and getting your garbage, because it's not like you're creating the arbitrary construct of time.
Yeah.
And will somebody be releasing this, so at twenty-four days?
Oh, yeah, our CPO.
Somebody will notice?
Yeah, our CPO is going to be...
Then you have something to say?
Well, just in, under measures, like, fifty dollars a day, but then they have to come in and guess how many days it's gonna take them, and then they're gonna come back and say, well, I guess I guessed wrong, and I want a refund.
Why can't they do a deposit or something, that you do like a, a two-hundred-dollar initial deposit or whatever, and we'll reconcile it, when you, when the bin goes away, we'll come square up, like, you know, and we'll, if it's more, if it's less, you know, we can settle the account after.
Okay, so you're gonna bring this back to us, Donna, or? Bring it back to, to Cow, in, in November.
I don't know, because this comes up a whole lot, though, does it?
Well, we're, no, it's, it's not, it's not regular, but we, we start to have, I think we have three or four issued last year, and then some...
Yeah, okay, so it's not like there's like ten different people that we're like holding up, and like complicating things for in the meantime?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, okay, nope, good feedback, that's good, that's what we like.
You want a motion to admit directing you to bring it back?
And yes, your worship, if you can direct administration to, to reflect a new fee schedule?
Right.
And put language in the bylaw that, that allows us to only, change the fee schedule? Yeah, amend fee schedule only, bylaw stays intact, go ahead, great.
Yeah, I, yeah, move to direct administration to amend the bylaw to reflect the intent of a separate fee schedule, which doesn't require amendment of future bylaws to modify, as well as to consider alternative structures for fees for bin, bin permits.
Thank you, on favor? That is carried.
Thank you, council.
All right. Uh, nine point two, repeal bylaw two thousand seven of FCS advisory board, and you're gonna give all three meetings to your...
Uh, no, not necessarily, your worship, I don't think it's good practice.
No, yeah, unless there's an imperative urgency, period, I don't want to do...
There's no urgency.
Okay, you want to do first and second?
First and second, and then we'll do, then you have time to look, we'll do third and the regular.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I do first reading of bylaw two zero two four ten, the bylaw to repeal, bylaw two thousand seven zero four FCS advisory board.
Good, on favor? Carried. And get a motion for the second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Good, on favor? Carried, there we go.
Thank you, council, we appreciate the, the fact that it's giving us more nimble opportunity to work with the community.
Okay. You are welcome. Eleven point one, variance port for September twenty twenty-four.
I just realized that I recopied this one from twenty twenty-three and didn't give Jesse that, it was twenty-three. We all did this, oh, no, or something, like, oh, God. I have it here, I just, I just printed off the September, because I went into September to grab the percentages for you, right, and then I just printed the twenty twenty-three one.
Do we need to have any reprint or cancel?
Yeah, I'm gonna get it here, just give me two seconds.
Your double, your worship of council, can you let it reprint?
How are you?
Um, yeah, we'll take, this will fit me.
Every year, this year, I'm having a hard time with dates, like, really hard time.
Thank you, Susan, I can speak to the auditors with your worship's permission.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Uh, our auditors were in today, and told all their, well, we have, they, they had emailed us a little while ago, asking for all the samples that they do, and Michael was here from, I can't remember their new name now, but Tenet Fats is part of the, it's a, it's a real weird name, yeah. It's a very, it's a weird, interesting name, right? So, anyways, Michael was here till about three-thirty today, from, from, he used to be Pincet, etc., and he had everything he needed today, didn't have to ask for anything else, everything was given to him, everything was sent to him ahead of time, which is good, so they'll be back in February for the audit with, will be well on time, well, well positioned to put everything in before the first of May, all right?
Yes, so we talked about it today, and they're coming in February, and then we should have them present possibly at the regular in March.
March.
If not, they'll present at the Cow in April, then you guys have time to review them, ask any questions, and then you can tell them at the end of April, but we'll be way ahead of schedule.
Yeah, it'd be nice to do it before, because then, like, if, we have to do, we have to pass a motion approving it before you submit it.
Right, but we still have time at the regular, and...
Yeah, but it'd be nice to have, like, a little more buffer, yeah.
But, yeah, so they'll be here, they'll be here in March, or February, thank you, Andrew, I apologize for that.
Yeah, it's, we're way ahead of schedule this year, quite frankly, which we should be.
At least you know I did it, because I think it's very hard to break.
Which is a good thing, this is where we want to be positioned, actually, frankly, we want to be positioned this early, and we want to make sure that when the accounts ask for something, it's all sent electronically, they never had to ask for anything else, they had everything, and they were, to move through the samples quite quickly today, I mean, he was here most of the day, I guess for him it was quick, to me, he looked...
Yeah, he was actually shocked that he was gonna be done by three, so...
Yeah, so that's good news.
Yeah, he was like, Cindy, I need your bank statement, I said, Michael, I sent them to you last week.
Or here, Cindy.
Okay, so, now that you have it in turn, we are seventy-five percent of the way through the year, and we have eighty-seven and a half percent of income, and only sixty-two percent, eighty-six, sixty-four percent.
That's gonna be typical with the revenue, though, because most of the revenue is...
And the revenue left, yeah, we have, I mean, what's really left is...
Just some utility billings and stuff.
And utilities, yeah.
I mean, we should be way ahead on, on revenue, should be not yet.
Yeah, and then we're under on expenses, so, license goods. And then I did give you also a capital update, I did correctly, just for, to see where we're... also a capital update. I did correctly. Just for us to see where we're at, so.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna ask, I guess they haven't went through yet for year end, but I mean, obviously, they're in the works. Like, there's a few of these other capital things are in, in the process. Like, are they all looking, they're very much all within budget amounts still? There's not, no more
Yeah, so the boulevard hasn't even started yet, but
No, but the thing that we have started, right? Like, there's the, the bulk fill station, the, the, well, I guess the intake pumps and stuff are not in here, obviously, yet.
Right, because we just got it.
There's surprises, I guess, somewhere that we know.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, we're pretty fuzzy.
Yeah. I get these all look fine, right? I know there's been bills that since then, like that, or things that were about to get built up.
Yeah, yeah. No, the river intake pump's about to get built. And so, yeah, we're, we're well within the budget of all of the things.
We have, the skids deer, the bins are free now.
Yes, and the skids deer stayed off.
Yeah, freed up twelve thousand. Is that twelve thousand twice a year, Cindy, or twelve thousand a year?
A few things that are rolling off, including the fine water treatment plant.
Well, that's something to think about.
Well, that's soon. That's coming. That's
That's huge.
It's been a, they held this wall for a lot of years. I'm pretty excited about it.
I'm too.
The bench, the skids deer was six thousand dollars every twenty years, so twelve grand a year.
Okay, so twelve grand total. So that's money back. Water treatment plant, Cindy, comes off?
The water treatment plant and the greater and eight thousand dollars more come off in twenty twenty-six.
So that's total of
Well, forty-six, forty-seven.
Yes, but that's, that's huge. Yeah, not
Fifty-seven, yeah.
And the water treatment plant, that's since two thousand and eleven, right?
Yeah.
So that's
No, I don't think payments started until twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve.
But you have time, actually, yes, according to the process.
Next year. And then the water
Forty-six, yeah.
Water treatment plant frees up how much, Cindy?
It alone, forty-five, forty-five thousand.
So
Yeah, no, so total in twenty twenty-six, we'll be done paying fifty. So twenty twenty-seven, we'll have fifty-eight thousand dollars more.
Yeah. We're slowly getting it down. We'll be low, we'll be below, what can we talk? When is it gonna be below a million? With all these payments?
Oh, we only pay three hundred and forty-one thousand a year.
I know.
Oh, below a million?
No, this is, like, yeah, how does that, how does it reduce our debentures down to what
Well, right now, like after twenty twenty-four, we'll have in principle two hundred and fifty-two thousand left to pay.
It for the, for the, no, we're like two point something in debt, right? Two point one million?
Oh, that's just that payment. Hang on.
Okay. I just want to know how much else is gonna reduce us when it comes off in twenty twenty-six. It should be, we should be
Well, realistically, I mean, unless we have surplus and we move some extra money to try to, unless we change something, realistically, you'll drop it six hundred thousand up for total debt.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking
Right? So like, it's been slowly reducing over time either way. And we pay, yeah, I mean, it's what, two hundred and eighty or two hundred and ninety a year towards principal, one or two years worth of principal.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, yeah, so again, next year towards principal is two fifty-two.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's a lot.
Oh, because, yeah, I guess, because a couple of things have dropped off since, yeah.
And then twenty twenty-seven, there's three more that drop off. So
They were all three small ones, are they not, though?
Um, yeah.
Probably another eight thousand dollars more.
No, that is the eight thousand dollar mora. This one's a more
I think some of its sewer system.
Yeah, I think some infrastructure.
It would be a sewer line, two sewer lines and a mora. So in twenty twenty-seven, twenty, twenty thousand drops off. That's just in principal.
So municipalities, your worship, through the city, can only go up to seventy-five percent of more. Where are we sitting?
Well, you hit seventy, they start asking questions, though. You realistically go limit seventy.
Yeah. You don't want to get there.
That's what I'm saying. Like, if you hit seventy-two, that doesn't mean you're okay because you're not at seventy-five. Like, if you had seventy-five, like
Yeah, you're done.
Yeah.
You're pretty much done. So where are we sitting, Cindy?
Well, we should be at like sixty, sixty-eight or something, I think, where we were. No, because these came down sometime. Sixty, sixty-four, maybe.
About sixty-two or sixty-three, maybe.
I think sixty-four probably just dropped down.
Well, I'll tell you what we were at at the end of last year.
Okay.
In the auditors.
I guess it was arbitrarily high when you guys first started looking at, because we had lower taxes during COVID. So our revenue declined, which drove up our ratio really high. So we were at, like I say, was I want to say sixty-eight or sixty-nine because we dropped taxes.
That's true.
And then because, you know, since then, taxes went back up and everything, and some of it definitely has got paid down a little bit.
Yeah.
I think we're, we're still well into the sixty, but I think it's probably around sixty-four-ish.
I was hoping about sixty-one or two, but
I don't know if it's sixty-two yet.
You may be too optimistic.
Give it, give it another year or two, and we'll be down to sixty, but
We'll be down, yeah. Yeah. We're working it down.
Although I guess for the tax teams, like the revenue from taxes, I mean, it might actually be down to as low as you think, just because of the increase in taxes.
Could be, yeah.
There's a lot of change in revenue.
A lot of change in revenue. And we've collected a lot of revenue as well. That wasn't collected before.
But it was, it was already like on the books as revenue prior, so that doesn't count.
Right.
Yeah. From like the, that ratio perspective, that's, they're not coincidental.
Yeah.
Two, three, two.
Yeah.
Our total debt limit is five point six million. So we were at two point three.
Last two point three, so
Yeah, so amount of debt limit unused was three point three. And then debt servicing limit is nine hundred and forty-two thousand. And debt servicing was three twenty-six. So our amount of debt servicing limit is So, and the debt servicing limit is twenty-five, point two-five times that's revenue.
Where does that put us so, like, from the seventy percent or seventy?
Oh, it's two fifty.
That's, I was saying, that's not, they're using, what, like, yeah, where are they coming up with the debt limit up from their, I don't understand where they're coming up with that, because that's not the same.
Forty-one, yeah. So the debt limit is calculated at one point five times the revenue of the town.
Yeah.
Combined by, in Alberta, regulations, that's the debt. So it's limited point two-five times, that's right.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so that's our total revenue last year would have been five.
That's not making sense.
Anything else? Any other questions?
I'm not sure what we're missing there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where we are from seventy percent or seventy.
Forty-one.
We're forty-one?
That can't be right. No, that, there's, something's
We didn't all get it off that much.
No, the limit comes in there. There's something that's not making sense there.
Yeah, I didn't figure it out.
We'll have it for you next time. We'll send it to you in the email or
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no way it got down that low.
No, I just, I just, yeah, we just kind of got to see where we're at here.
It would be nice.
Well, because they're taking one point five times our, one point five times our revenue when our revenue was three point seven.
It's not off of all revenue, though. It's, there's some, like, some grants and stuff that don't, don't apply to that. It's
Well, that wasn't capital grants. That was, that wasn't government
It's essentially mostly just like your, your basic kind of taxes, sort of, right?
So I'll, I'll look and I can, I can talk to Michael as
I feel like there's a disconnect there somewhere that we're not quite
Good question to ask.
And I will look.
Yeah, we want to find out for sure.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Anybody have other questions? Got a motion to accept the variance report.
I'll make that motion.
You, all in favor? Carry. All right, public comments? Irene, Debbie, anything back there?
I tried very hard to think of something to say next week tonight, but I guess you're off the hook.
You're, you're actually distracted over there. Yeah, I hear you. Yeah, I give you that one.
Maybe I can say something to you, okay? I'll put that, I, congratulations. I hear you're getting married.
Thank you.
It's a shocking wedding, I'm told.
Yes.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Congratulations. And
Thank you.
Another thing, I guess we won't have another meeting. We're November eleventh. They're gonna be having the remembrance day thing at the, at the school.
Ceremony.
Pardon me?
Ceremony.
At the school?
Ceremony.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Why are they not, why isn't it Tuesday?
Yeah, well, Phyllis, Phyllis won't be today about it. And so they're, they're anticipating a re
Okay.
So, but that out there, anything else from
Did I add it up to, I, I was, I was trying to clarify my, so you guys had your budget meeting and your, I forget the word for it, for your wages and stuff like that, nine point one? Was it nine point one?
Okay, go on there, wages.
Yeah. So you guys had that meeting already?
Yes.
And did everybody attend or just on camera or a few?
Some sort of meeting for
Basically, I'm curious to who voted on it? Like, did all members of council vote on that to pass the new, new one? Did they go up or did they stay?
No, like, we just reaffirmed it tonight.
Correct.
But we passed, we, like, a modification to it a few years back, but that modification was limiting the ability to increase it and didn't actually increase it from the one that was set, like, to council. It hasn't increased for
No, that's what, that's what
Oh, yeah, it hasn't increased for, shit, it's been three councils since it's changed.
Yeah. And what were those numbers again?
Uh, it's like eight hundred and something.
Eight forty-three, sixty-one, I believe, for council. And one thousand and one twenty-six. Is that right?
Well, that's, yeah. And then authorize the expansion, expense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, yeah.
Was that public or no?
Yes.
Yeah, right there.
Yes, it was. No, but was that a public meeting?
Everything we do has, like, we can't make a motion without it being public. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Where'd you copy that visitor today to hear?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, one thousand one oh seven, sorry. Eight forty-three, sixty-three. I was off by some
It used to be indexed to inflation, but then we had for years just waived increase, the increases for inflation. And so we had amended it. And so it's a newer number where the amendment, like, the change for why it's a newer bylaw was we got rid of the default increase for inflation. That was never taken either way. And changed it that you can't increase it even if you wanted to by more than what the town staff were to get for a raise that year. And then prior to that, it was the same other than, like I said, there's that default for inflation that no one ever, no one ever took for years. It's been probably, I don't know, probably nine, ten years since that was kind of changed.
So those wages and penalties or whatever you want to call them, that's been for how long?
Like, honestly, probably, like, I'm gonna say eight years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they haven't changed. I know we've done, we talked about, we did some studies about what other municipalities had. And, you know, some are more, some are less, but I think, you know, we were, and of course, at the end of the year, the financial papers did tell us exactly what all the councilors get and were paid for the year and all that, so.
And, and your worship, those papers are put on our website as well. A lot of papers are
Yeah, those are correct.
Let's see, they
So far, correct from what, like, the, telling the dude, you know, those councilors are